October 15th, meeting of the zoning Cold Spring Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm Aaron Wolf, I'm the chair. Laura Bozzi is absent tonight, but we also have Eric Worth, John Martin, and Donald McDonald. Zooming in. So a couple of things before we get into the agenda. I checked. Tonight, noticed that the public hearing materials have not been posted for four Morris Avenue. That has kind of been our standard since we went to Zoom. And I'm, I have some concern that we should to postpone the hearing. Actually, we can open it and then continue it. So we don't have to renotice it just to make sure that anybody who would have wanted to see those here at the meeting. Would be able to. However, we don't have anybody else here at the meeting at this time. So I guess I'm. I'm okay with going ahead with that if the rest of the board is because those materials have been available from Village Hall. This whole time. So I think we're covered there as far as. Access to the materials and. And notifications. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Were the signs up in front of the house as well?
Yeah, we have the affidavit and I think I did see it up there once when I went by. But.
Is there any requirement? Is there a requirement that the materials be posted on the web?
I, I am not aware of a specific requirement, but I'm not aware that there's not a requirement. So I, I don't know. It's just what we've been doing. Usually for. You know, for the village board of trustees, they put everything in their agenda packet and that also gets posted online.
Did you, did anybody make, if you know, to your knowledge, a request to Jeff about any documents or? Involved in the matter? No?
Okay. Don't know one way or the other on that.
Okay. I don't, we don't have any other things to say other than that. I think the appropriate thing, as you say, is just to leave it open just in case, right?
Yeah. Katie and Eric, do you have, is this going to affect your plans for construction in any way if we delay? Until the next meeting?
It might, it depends on when the next meeting is because we're, we're scheduled to start construction on November 9th. And after this, we'll need to go on to the historic district review board to talk about design.
So our next meeting is November 5th. And it's not likely that you would get the building permit. By the ninth, if we do it then. So the. If we have it and somebody. And. I'm sorry, who's talking?
Nevermind. Sorry. I just realized where it is.
Oh, the Zoom thing?
Yeah, it's on, I didn't. Anyway.
Yeah, sorry. I forgot to put it in the email, but it's always in the agenda.
It's on the agenda page itself, not in the email. I get it.
Hey, Aaron, let me just say out loud that. If nobody's made an inquiry and if the meeting itself was properly noticed and. You know, and nobody's here responding to come to the meeting and saying, hey, I, I was interested. I saw the notice. I didn't have an opportunity to look at the documents. I went and I looked for them. Couldn't find them. I just. I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just talking, you know, devil's advocate that I'm just not sure if it's needed to, to continue it. But to continue, it would just be the safe way of really doing it. Just to be sure that everybody had noticed, but if the person was really that interested, you would think they might show up on the. For tonight's Zoom meeting because they'd be permitted to get on it, I imagine.
Yeah. So just talking through the most likely scenario and best scenario would be we hold it tonight. And everybody's fine with it. The. The worst scenario would be we hold it tonight. Someone complains that the materials weren't available and there's a legal requirement that they be available online. And then we basically have to renotice the hearing and the hearing again. So. I'm okay with going ahead with it. If the applicants are in taking that risk, the possibility is, I mean, looking at the worst case and unlikely scenario is you'd have to stop construction of the fence. If you get, if you get approved and then you would have to wait until another hearing could be scheduled. So if you're okay with, with that, that risk, then I'm okay going ahead with the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, that's sounds fine. Yeah.
Okay.
Just let me interrupt one second. I think I saw a question from Sam Bro in writing whether or not his matter will be discussed tonight. So.
He's. Donald, did we get anything from John first?
Here, Donald. Donald, you're muted. You need to unmute, Donald. That's it.
A decision, a prominent decision this morning from John first and we've been. I went through it. John went through it. Eric went through it. And so John revised it for my comments and. John's comments, but Eric's comments came in, you know, about an hour ago. So. And his are. Is a. He's, you know, he's questioning a lot of the basis for how it's being done. So. So we certainly could talk about that tonight.
So, so the idea is we're going to talk about it. But and maybe perhaps finalize it by discussing it between us because in the end it's a decision that we're going to be making. But the thing is, we won't necessarily have a finalized.
I think we have to decide how we're going to deal with Eric. And I don't know whether we can get that done tonight or not.
Okay, well, we'll find out. So we're going to address it. That's.
Sam was. We'll definitely address it tonight.
Yeah. So Sam was asking by written question, whether or not we're going to discuss it at all and whether you should stay on, on the line. That's the point. While we deal with four Morris at this.
Right, well. What did he?
Donald, we're having a little bit of trouble understanding. So. I just, I think, you know, let's just settle the agenda. And if you want to have at least some discussion of about it, then we'll leave it on the agenda. If you'd rather wait until our next meeting, then we'll just take it off the agenda. But that's going to be up to you, Donald.
You mean 21 parsonage?
Yes.
I think we should talk about it tonight.
Okay, so we'll leave it on the agenda.
Right.
And. So then let's do this. Let's, let's have the public hearing for four Morris. And then we'll review a couple of sets of minutes and then I'll sign off and you can discuss 21 parsonage. Okay. All right. So. I would like to open the public hearing for an application for a variance to the fence height rule, just four feet in the R1 district. It's for four Morris Avenue. And we've got all of the materials. I've reviewed the, the receipts and we have the. Affidavit for the public hearing sign and we've already okayed the application materials. So we're all set to go at this point. So. Katie and or Eric, why don't you introduce the project again? And now this is the public hearing. So. It's okay to try to persuade us at this point. And the public. Who has, has not really shown up. So go ahead.
Sure. Okay. So we're applying for a six foot tall privacy fence on one side of our property that we border with the whistling Willie's parking lot. We've asked for the fence height to be adjusted from four feet to six feet, just because we see directly into their parking lot and their dumpster area. And. We are hoping to just have a little bit more of an enclosed fence on that side. We see headlights kind of coming into our house as well. So the taller fence height, I think, will help with that. We're also hoping for a more closed design like privacy fence style. There's been a serious rat problem on their side. I mean, I know a privacy fence probably won't fix the rat problem, but it will at least probably, I hope, help keep the rats out of our yard a little bit. And also the, the debris from the dumpsters that kind of makes its way over into our lawn as well from the birds and things. So that's, that's what we're hoping for. We really appreciate, you know, your, your thoughts on this and whether you think we can move ahead with, with the plan. We're planning on doing a picket fence of the four foot height on the remaining sides of the house.
And it's a replacement of what was there, but it's deteriorated and beyond repair now.
Was the existing fence six feet?
No, on the, the side that we're hoping to have a six foot tall fence, it was a picket fence. That was lost, I think roughly a third of its pickets now. So we need to.
Some of the people whistling Willie's have been taken.
Okay.
Now, Aaron, would the historic board be the? Board that weighs in on the nature of type of fence? If it's six foot, what, what it might look like?
Yep, we're not going to, we're not going to discuss the design. If you want to show us the design, we'll be happy to look at it, but. I think as far as we're concerned, we're, we're just imagining a six foot fence and the historic board is, is perfectly suited to decide what it looks like.
Yeah, it's consistent design. So it's just a rounded picket at the top. And instead of being spaces, it'll just be collapsed. And then we open the spaces up for the four foot portions.
Is it going to be a straight across fence like, like a wall type fence? Or is it going to be sort of staggered? Where Eric can get through staggered sort of. Vertical planks?
Well, our hope is a wall, but that's sort of up to the historic review board too. I think that they raise those questions for us.
Yeah, we have an alternate fence design in mind if needed, where we can stagger the pickets. If they need to see some light and air, our, our hope would be to have more privacy and coverage just on that side of the property. Just given the, the previous problems I mentioned, but then also there are people out in the parking lot late at night. So.
All the time.
Kind of all hours. So we would actually feel more comfortable from having more privacy and less space between pickets if, if we can, just on that one side.
And it's consistent with the other properties nearby that border Willie's. They also have the, the closed sort of privacy wall too.
I'm not looking at the site. I remember looking at your site plan and it seems to me what I saw was that the portion that borders whistling Willie does not go in either depth of your lot. There was about a three, four foot section of property line, which is. Bordering not well, kind of the, the Zwareks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's behind their barn.
I looked at it and I thought, well, I would be no problem, no problem with the six foot fence along the commercial parking lot of whistling Willie's. But I would be completely against six foot for that last couple of feet, wherever it is. It's not absolutely boarding whistling Willie's. That the four, the six foot would not go the entire depth of the lot. It would stop. At the end of where whistling Willie's parking lot ends.
There's a structure there. So it would, it would run behind the Zwarek's barn. So that's, that's, that's where it would end.
Fine, four foot high, four foot high. That's what I would say at that point, four foot high, not six foot. Think enough going on there.
Yeah.
That'd be my comment on it.
Yeah, when it comes to residential properties, the way we've looked at things is that it's four feet between bordering residential properties. Where it's not, you know, backed up to a school or so on and so forth, or, you know, the business, we can understand. That's been something we've allowed, but. You know, once you, once you run up behind private property residential. That's where the six foot level typically that the way we've ruled to be consistent is where we've ended it.
So that's sort of a, and I'm happy to supply pictures, but there's sort of a no man's land back there of multiple fences and mess. Where people from Whistling Lily shoot behind and urinate and do some stuff. And it's right behind their barn and there's sort of like, no one's in charge of that space. And we've talked, I mean, we've talked to the Zwareks about this and the people around us. And so it wouldn't be a surprise. Our biggest concern was sort of the aesthetics of going from six feet to four feet on a sink on a, in a single stretch. We just didn't want it to look weird and off in a space that we would see more than anybody else because it's behind their barn.
Well, we have to be consistent. And the other thing, you know, you can at one point, just sort of. You know, maybe on a, on a diagonal, just bring the fence down to maybe look at, make it look a little more uniform into syncing it together with the lower portion. And as far as anybody else like lingering back there, I mean, that's, that's really a job for the police and or for the Zwareks, if they're actually on their property, for them to get those people off.
It's not clear whose property it is.
Like there, a six foot. They're all do is encourage people to go back there and start chewing and stuff. Whereas if it's four foot, they're more observable. And also a no man's land, as it is now with a six foot fence, it'll become even more of a no man's land. And so, and it's also against the precedent that we've been studying for, I don't know, 20, 30 years here that we have no problem when you're, when you're bordering a commercial parking lot, that kind of stuff. But the minute you get to residential. It's a new, in terms of our, the way we've been doing it. So.
I think. To address the question of whose property that is, I think it's pretty clear from the. From the surveys and the, and the maps that. The whistling Willie stops at the corner and then, you know, right behind their dumpster with your, and Zwarch's yard. So I'm not sure where the no man's. The no man's land is. But. You know, John's comments are, are right that it's, we can't. I mean, it's not our role to, to offer protection that the police need to be doing if there's somebody getting back there into private property.
In their new barn, when they read, when they rebuild back there, they're pulling the barn further away from the rear property line. We're giving more room there. So there's going to be more activity there from their end, I think. So.
I just out of curiosity.
Whatever. Yeah, John.
I mean, was there, was, did, did the current applicant weigh in on what the Zwarek's project was at all by any chance, just out of curiosity?
No, we're new to town. We didn't really know. We didn't even know who they were when we got the notice in the mail. So, but we do now and it's too late to weigh in. So.
But we also have spoken to them directly about their plan and we're fine with it.
Yeah, yeah, we're totally fine.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Keep going.
No, no, no. I mean, we, they told us because I guess in their forum, they, they pointed out that our, our shed apparently is illegal. We didn't, we inherited the shed, but I don't know what that means.
We're kind of learning as we go. So thank you for your patience with us. We're trying to figure out how this all works.
Yeah.
So now, were you owners of your property when the Zwareks were making their application and the notices went out?
Yes, we were. We weren't here full time, but yeah.
Did you receive the notices?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You did. Did you ever have any conversations with them as to what they intended to build there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we've spoken.
What they anticipated, correct? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely did. And Jen, Jen in particular went out of her way to make sure we, we knew it was happening.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, I mean, do you feel that the, the structure is, you know, for its size, perhaps a little bit too close to your property line? And just makes a little bit more of a, a shrouding of. The activity, as you're saying, that goes on behind these areas. Is it?
No, I wouldn't say so. It's more, we just see the aftermath. Like we see all the trash and stuff back there. We see people kind of walking out from behind that area.
Or the cops.
There, there are just a lot of people in the parking lot at all times. And that's, that's one of the reasons we want this fence.
Right. I'm just, it's your viewpoints online as we go on this video as to where you were with that project. And, you know, this may go for future. Thinking by. As to this kind of activity that's going on behind there. And there's no doubt it occurs. I mean, heck, they're breaking into cars all over the place at the moment. I mean, who knows? I mean, it's just a lot of mischief that's going on. But the net, net of it is. This is something that you probably have to come. You know, in contact with the Zwareks is about and everything to. Just get a uniform opinion, put, you know, pressed over to the police to, to really to, to better monitor this area. And not necessarily putting it on you, but it is, in fact, you're a property. And I would personally do it myself.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's awkward.
I'm looking at the site plan.
Go ahead, sorry.
Donald.
I'm looking at the site plan. It is, it's a substantial, it's a substantial length of territory there where you bore the Zwarek's rear yard. And that's like 15, 20 feet. It's easy. And yeah, I would be completely against a six foot high fence in that section. That I would be for the six foot high fence. It ends right at the corner of Whistling Willie's. And I don't see where this no man land is. It's not, certainly not on your property and it can't be on the Zwarek's because their barn is right against the property line. So I don't know where these people are hanging out other than in the extreme corner whistling Willie's.
Yeah.
Where they hang out.
There's like a, it's like a gangway. I don't know whose property it is, frankly. If there's like spent space between our fence and a dilapidated fence on the Zwarek's side. And then the folks that live on the other side of them too. So the kids go through there like, because they all have kids. We don't have kids. So the kids pass through that back area all the time to get to each other's yards. I don't honestly, when we didn't, the Zwarek's asked about the barn was the first we realized it wasn't even part of Whistling Willie's. So we had no idea what was going on back there.
Well, yeah. All right, well, security issue. Foot high fences. When you're talking about residential areas, as far as I'm concerned, I totally get the six foot. And or Whistling Willie's, but not against, not, not against the Zwarek's place. It should be four foot. So you can look and we can see across yards and we don't feel like we're living in cages. Which is what we don't want Cold Spring to become.
Okay.
I know everybody wants a six foot high fence, but when everybody in six foot high fences. It's not Cold Spring anymore. It's not the place that we all moved to. So I would be against the six foot extending, being adjacent to any residential properties.
Okay, Donald, we've got, got that. Eric, do you have any questions for the applicants?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. So there's nobody here from the public unless Sam has anything to, to chime in, but I don't believe he's here for this. Katie or, or Eric, do you have any other comments? If not, I think we'll, we'll close the public hearing and then the board will discuss and, and make a decision.
Okay. Uh, what, so what happens next? Like we sign off and then you guys email us or something?
No, no, no.
So you stay on.
Through some statutory criteria right now, discussing your application.
Make it, make it clear to the applicants that once we close the public hearing, then you're, you're, you know, observed, but you can't participate anymore. So if you want to say anything more about why you think we should approve the, whatever you want us to approve, now's the time. Once we close the public hearing, then we, you know, we talk about it amongst ourselves and we make a decision.
I don't know what else there is to say, really. I guess we'll just wait for whatever anyone weighs in with. Thank you for hearing us.
And you're not the exception. We're very consistent on this, you know, across the board, to be fair to all.
Okay. So. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? There's no further comment from the public.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Okay, so I think we're, we probably the four of us here on the board are in agreement that the six foot fence should only run along the B1. District and not the R1, which is the Zwarch's backyard. So I guess.
Ask Eric what's his opinion. We don't, we haven't gotten that yet.
I agree. I agree with that, that position.
Okay. So I think then what we need to do is have a. We'll run through the five criteria with, with that in mind. And then we will have a motion for the. For a reduced variance, which would be just the length of the whistling Willie's boundary, which is the. That B1 district. Actually, it's not the entire length of that boundary. It's, it starts quite a bit back from the road. From, from Morris. So it's the original westerly starting point, but we're going to stop it at the end of the B1 district. Does that, did I make sense there?
It makes sense to me. As long as everybody knows where the line is. I'm not sure.
It will be on the, it's basically the marked on the survey. So we will. It will be on the stamped.
We can reference to the survey where we indicate that there's an ending. Yeah.
And in the, in the resolution, it will specifically mention that it's the corner of the whistling Willie's parking lot. I guess that would be the northeast corner of it where it contacts the four Morris property.
As well as this large property where it comes into contact.
Right. Okay, so. Let me. Just get my note taken already. Let me. Just get my note taken already. So the benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by any other feasible means. I'll start this off. And I will say that. Could be achieved by some kind of hedge or thick trees, but I think practically the fence is the best, the best way to achieve. The light barrier and this maybe some sound barrier that the applicant is seeking. Basically the nuisance barrier from the activity in the whistling Willie's. Eric, do you want to comment?
I, I think there is no feasible alternative means for this goal.
Okay, Donald.
I agree. There's no feasible alternative. And as well, we have a well-worn precedent that. If you have a residential property, the portion that borders the business district or, you know, a parking lot, a public parking lot. You get, you have the rights to a six foot high fence.
Okay, John.
Yeah, I agree that under the circumstances where there's a dumpster in that corner.
Yeah, I, I agree that under the circumstances where there's a dumpster in that corner, and there is a, there's testimony about, you know, vermin in the area, and that proximity would be hard for that to be kept out by um, vegetation that would be used as a barrier, uh, that can be at times as a, um, soft barrier, but in this case, with that dumpster there and the vermin, it'd be less, um, practical than, than a fence.
Okay. To the variance, proposed variance will or will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and a detriment to nearby properties will not be created by the granting of the area variance. Eric?
I, I see no net, um, harmful effect. Um, it's true that views will be reduced. Um, anyone looking to the north, uh, from, uh, from Main Street will have a, a reduced view because of the higher fence, but then anyone looking south, uh, anyone who goes down Morris Avenue and turns around and looks south will actually have an improved view because of the, the, the unsightly dumpster and parking lot will be screened. So, um, minor effects, all of them, and, um, the detrimental effect is, is minimal or zero.
Okay, um, Donald?
I agree with what Eric said.
John?
Yeah, I believe that there's a detrimental effect because it's sort of, again, it sort of blocks and obstructs a line, uh, line of view and everything. The dumpster is down at a lower level, almost at the ground level, I would think of the neighboring, the applicant's property. Uh, but, you know, that detriment is, you know, really outweighed, uh, by the need, uh, because of the dumpster in the area as well as by, um, uh, the recognition by the board of, uh, this kind of activity of, with business, uh, and the rights of the owner, and with the light pollution and so on and so forth. In this case, also activity from, um, you know, individuals, you know, in that area, that it's needed. So it's outweighed, I think the detriment's outweighed.
And I, um, next, uh, the required variance requested is or is not substantial. Um, Donald?
It's eight fifteen.
Well, uh, taken in its entirety in the sense of the amount of fence that's proposed to be constructed, um, it is, it is a, um, a portion of it, but it, it certainly, um, is that there, I would say it's not substantial because they're, they're minimum, uh, they're minimizing it to the specific portion of the lot, which is bordering the commercial activities. And, um, uh, it's in line with, um, our, a lot of past precedent. Uh, so I, I don't think in this instance, it's a substantial variance, uh, to, to grant.
Thanks, uh, John.
Yeah, I don't see it as a substantial variance to be requested, uh, again, because of the, the policy the board recognizes with regards to business district, um, sort of, uh, shading, you know, and protecting residential, um, use from the, the effects of, uh, business operation, uh, and for all the specific uh, grounds already discussed. So I don't think it's substantial. It's something that we've granted in other cases.
I agree with that. Uh, I agree with John there. Um, and I think that, uh, Donald has a good point that the, the, um, amount of fence that's, or the, the length of the variance is being minimized by not bringing it all the way out to the street. Um, Eric?
Well, um, I, I would call it substantial, just, uh, taking this criterion narrowly on its own terms. Um, I think it's substantial because it is a fifty percent increase in the permitted height.
Okay, um, the, uh, next criteria, criterion, the proposed variance will or will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Um, I think, John, you're up for the first.
Yeah, I would say it has, it has a slight impact. It has, uh, and I don't see any environmental, uh, you know, ramifications, uh, by putting it up, uh, other than maybe the flow of air and, uh, but, you know, anything that would cause a environmental, you know, hazard or problem, that I don't see that existing.
Okay, um, I do not see any adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Um, Eric?
I see no significant physical or environmental effects. There may even be slight benefits. If it, if the fence helps in the control of litter, say, blowing litter, or in the control of rats. Um, several of the nuisance factors that the applicants have cited could potentially be, uh, end up being controlled better to, thanks to the higher fence.
Um, Donald? Will or will not have an adverse.
Um, I agree with what Eric says. I don't think it's gonna have an adverse effect on the neighborhood.
Okay, um.
The neighborhood is a bunch of dumpsters and some rats outside.
The, um, finally, the alleged difficulty in this variance was or was it self-created? Um, I'm gonna say, um, perhaps uncharacteristically, was not because of, the applicant did not choose to put the R1 district right next to the B1 district in such a location. So I, I don't think that, um, there's anything that's self-created about, um, the necessity here. It's purely a matter of where the zoning district boundaries are. Why I wish the village board would make this a change to the code so we, um, Eric?
Well, the way I understand this criterion, um, I would call the application, I would call the, the dilemma self-created because the applicants acquired the property in, in knowledge of its, um, layout and of the neighbors. And so therefore, um, they, um, it, it, um, at, at, they, that, the problem qualifies as self-created according to the technical sense of this criterion.
Okay, we can, um, that's an interesting point, um, but I won't, I won't open a discussion about that at the moment.
I agree with Eric.
And John?
You know, I agree with Eric's line of thought, um, you know, with a, an infusion of some of the statements you made. Uh, and so it's sort of a mixed bag. And again, in, in the first instance, uh, it's a choice of the property and the circumstances. And I'm sure, you know, buyer beware, everybody looks all around. So they know what they're, uh, getting into when they buy the property. Um, and it's just really, again, a policy for us to uh, help allow a buffer at times, you know, uh, when it comes to these situations with, uh, residential against business and, you know, where the line's drawn. But again, you cut, you choose, you choose the property in the first instance. So, you know, it's mostly self-created, but I, I guess, I get that there's a, a mix of state in here that it isn't in part created, deliberately, uh, you know. There's a choice, so I don't want to get further into it.
Okay, um, so let me try to sum up, uh, launching statement, which I will, uh, fine-tune before I, um, turn this in. Uh, so generally, um, we thought the fence the best alternative on them, and certainly the other alternatives are barely feasible, if at all, for, um, protection from the nuisance happening in the B1 zone on the other side of the property line. Um, we did not see any harmful effects in the character of the neighborhood. In fact, um, uh, there were some, uh, comments about an improvement with, um, blocking the, uh, the parking lot there. We, did say that, uh, the variance is not substantial, or, um, where, while it is substantial, it's minimized. Um, Eric did, um, note that it was a fifty percent increase of the um, permitted height, which is certainly substantial. Um, but in general, we, we did not see it as substantial enough to cause a problem. Um, and we did not see any adverse impact environmentally or physically. Um, in fact, maybe an improvement again because of the nuisance on the other side. Finally, uh, uh, I think the, the majority here said that it was a self-created, um, necessity because of the, uh, you know, the decision to, to live right there next to the, um, to the B1 district, but, but I think that this is really a, a matter of the original planning. So, and not really the applicant or any, any homeowner's, um, self-creation. So, um, but, but the majority said it was self-created. So I think, um, if that kind of, unless I got anything really wrong there, which I will fine-tune later, um, I think what we need to do is have, uh, a motion to grant the variance from the, as indicated on the provided site plan, except we are going to stop it um, where the B1, and the B1 district ends, and the R1 begin southern, um, boundary of the For Morris property. So it's, that sounds right. Somebody would make a motion, please, for that.
And, uh, Eric, Aaron, if I could ask, before we decide that, uh, there was a discussion about how to, uh, and whether the board has an opinion about this, and of course, I guess in the end, it'll have to be, I mean, first of all, actually, it will affect us because we're making the decision on it. So whether or not there's a slight, diagonal part of the fence that comes down to meet, or whether it's just gonna go from six foot to four foot. And I'm just curious as, you know, because it was, I guess it was raised, and maybe I raised it, but so that there's no uncertainty about this issue, what does the board think? You know, for a sort of a diagonal that gives sort of a, instead of a sharp line, a demarcation, uh,
So you're, you're suggesting or asking about maybe saying, instead of right on the corner there, we would give, say, another six feet to allow.
Or less than that, maybe like three or, maybe two or three feet, just to allow a, an angling down to make it look.
I don't know what kind of angle would work, so, but I'm just, yeah, something like.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, what is the board thinking in general about it? Maybe, maybe the board feels we're getting into something that, we just shouldn't, and it just limited to four feet.
I think you should just limit it to four feet. Just straight down. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be the end of the world.
I agree with Donald.
Okay.
It's where you, where you would plant something to hide the, you know, the sharp end of the six-foot section, if that was a problem.
But it, but I think it makes the decision clear, and this is really the direction we've gone in all along anyway. So I was just, I was just sort of addressing what the applicant's, uh, considerations were, uh, with the fact that we were gonna break, put a break in the height at a certain point along the same line. So I, in the end, you know, I'm willing to go with Donald and, uh, and Eric. That's really where we've been all along, and, um, and, and it makes less of a, an issue where we can waffle from one application to the next, uh, really. On, under similar circumstances, that is.
Yeah.
So, i- if you look at Zuarich, if they don't have a six-foot-high fence along Whistling, now they're gonna want one. And so six foot, then we'll just go right around, you know, as if it was encircling the Whistling Willie's parking lot. Simple. Really well, it'll be fine. When you start to put the diagonal and all that kind of, all you're doing is just, uh, you're making it into like an architectural feature, and it's gonna look like, uh, you know, um, it's gonna draw more attention to it than anything else. I think you just, you just, you just simple, just six to four, be done with it.
I'm with, would somebody like to make a motion then for, to that effect?
Donald, did you make a motion to that effect?
No, we're still, I'm waiting for somebody to make a motion, please.
Well, I'll make a motion to that effect, uh, simply that, uh, you know, we're gonna grant the variance of the six-foot fence. Uh, you know, I think, uh, where it begins, uh, closer to Morris Avenue, but runs only to the point uh, that the B1 district ends on the southerly border of the property. And then it becomes four foot from the point where the Zuarich's residential property backs up to their property. Going further east.
Starting, starting.
Yes, exactly.
From, starting in from Morris where it currently is shown on the site plan, but then changing the site plan to end the fence, the six-foot section at the, uh, where the B1 property, or the B1 line ends.
I second the motion.
Thank you. So, uh, all in favor of, uh, approving the application, um, with the variance request has changed. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Katie and Eric, the next step is for me to, um, draft the resolution, and I will send it in to, to Jeff and Charlotte, the building department, and they will then issue you a building permit, which you will need before you can get started on the fence work. Um, and that will show them exactly where the, where the six-foot section should go. Um, so you're all set to go to the historic board, and, and they will know what to do from there.
Do we just reach out to the historic district review board ourselves, or does it, is there a process that's kind of kicked off once we get the variance approved?
I, I think you should, uh, just email Kathleen or, or Al and, and tell them the results, and then, um, if they have any questions, they'll, uh, they'll get back to us, but I will get, um, most likely get this done over the weekend, so they'll have it in hand before meeting with them.
Okay. Do you know when their next meeting is? I don't know if you know their schedule.
I think they just met, so they probably meet in two weeks. I think they meet every two weeks. If not, it's probably, um, the first Wednesday of November.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, um, thanks for.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Good luck.
So, um, next up, we've got a couple of sets of minutes to go through.
Eric, do you want, it's sorry to interrupt, do you want us to also, uh, weigh in on what? Do you want, sorry to interrupt, do you want us to also weigh in on whatever proposed opinion? Should we anticipate you might be sending it? If you're not, just let us know.
I haven't been for the ones that are pretty simple that we've been having.
Okay, this one's pretty straightforward. Okay.
But if, if anybody would like to have, have a go at it, I know they suffer a little bit when Eric doesn't get a chance to, to edit my typos and clarify some things, but.
We can do that. I mean, how does, how does the board feel?
This seems pretty cut and dried. It's pretty uncontroversial and not complicated, so I, I certainly don't need to see it myself.
Go ahead, Donald.
I'll just send it in.
I didn't, I don't know what you're, I don't, what are you talking about?
The question is, would the board like to review this resolution before I send the final version in? And it seems like the answer is going to be no, unless you want to.
No, I wouldn't. I, I'll send you a, a, a red line markup of the, if you'd like, of the site plan, just highlighting the portion that's going to, that we saying it's going to be going to be six foot.
Okay, yeah, if you.
You could use it or not.
Yeah, if, if you have time before the weekend, if not, don't worry about it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so I hope that everybody had received the minutes that I forwarded again, just before the meeting. We've got, let's do nine, three. First, if we can.
I only received minutes for 10, one.
All right, let me forward that again. Okay, I just sent that, Eric.
So which one we doing first, guys?
Nine, three.
Nine, three, okay.
I didn't get the nine, three also. Did you send it to everybody?
Yeah, well, it was sent back on September 4th. Let me send it again. I thought I sent this one again, but I guess. I'm just going to send it again. John, do you have it?
Yeah.
All right. It's coming to you, John, Donald. Whoops, sorry. Just let me know when you're done reading through. I'm going to step away and grab a glass of water for a moment. Are you still working, John and Donald?
I'm willing to.
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
I think we need clarification on one point in the section on 21 parsonage discussion where Donald's remarks appear, there's one reading granting all of the requested variances in addition to parking waivers is excessive. But.
Parking waivers.
There is no part, no longer any parking waiver requested.
No. Right.
So was that a hypothetical? You either take it out, or I think he may have been talking about a hypothetical, because that was, we were going back and forth on that.
Well, it, it should go out. The, the applicant was not requesting any variances for parking. They have two spaces on the lot, so it just say all granting all the requested variances is excessive, a bridge too far, disregard the code.
Okay. Got it.
And further down, under my comment, the last point, approval would flaunt the code. The correct word there is, would be flout. It's not flaunt, flaunt has a, has a different meaning.
Got it.
Flout the code.
Donald, you still reading through?
You talking to me?
Yeah, are you still reading through?
No, I'm, I'm good. That was my, what Eric found and what is what I found, so.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I, the only, you know, I heard all the other points and I'm in agreement with them. You know, under my statements here, I remember that first one, I said, like, while the neighborhood consists of some small residential lots, the construction of, of homes on those lots pre-existed, the building code. That's what I meant in regards to that first one. If you need me to repeat that, I will. Do you want me to do that?
I have, I got it. And the applicant seeks to squeeze in too much.
Well, you don't have to put that in. I mean, I, it's, you, you can take that out. It, it, that's already been said. I think that was said over and again, so I, there's no need to really repeat it here. I, I think the point I was trying to make there was simply that there are some small residential lots in the area, but the buildings on them were constructed prior to the code. And the, the second point is correct. I did, it's what was said and and when I said the application is too far from code requirements to be considered, I think what I, what I suggested or, you know, I think what I said was to be seriously considered.
You, you want me to add in seriously?
Yeah, seriously considered.
Okay.
It's eight forty-five.
And then, and the last point, the application goes against code in many ways, especially in regard to the lot size variance. Again, that's, it's in essence redundant. I guess it's not terribly redundant, but it is in part redundant with the second point there.
Okay. The only change I had was in the first section, obviously on 11 or before 11 Benedict and the third paragraph. And I'm not sure what I said, but I think rather than consider a person an asset, I would say that her experience and expertise will be an asset. If that's if that's close enough to anyone's recollection of what I.
Yeah, I remember that.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I moved that we approved the minutes as amended.
My second emotion.
Oh, in favor of approving the nine, three, 20 minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we've got 10, one. Does everybody have that?
Yep.
Yes. I have no changes.
Yeah, no changes here. I don't think Donald was there at the meeting, was he? Aaron?
That's what it says, yeah.
I'm not, wasn't at the meeting, so I'm not, I'm not going to be commenting.
So Aaron, I, I moved to approve the minutes as written for 10, one.
I'll second the motion.
And was, see, was Aaron there? Yeah, was he? Yeah. So all in favor? Aye, aye. Did we lose Aaron?
He's here.
Sorry, I was, my switch was off. Yes, I was there and I vote yes to approve the minutes. Thank you.
Okay. So they're approved?
Yep. All right. So at this point I'll sign off and the three of you can discuss what you're going to do next on the 21 parsonage and comments and so forth. Sound good?
Thank you for your help. Thank you for your help.
I will do my best to remember to put the Zoom link in the email next time.
No, not at all. Thanks again, Aaron.
All right, good night.
Can I? So Donald, we're listening to you, my friend.
Hey, so where we were was, John, you made your comments, I made my comments. And, and John, then John first made the changes and sent us back a document. And now Eric has weighed in with, so his first point about pre-existing non-conforming, I totally agree with, and it's when one of my pet peeves that everybody says pre-existing non-forming, when non-conforming within the definition means pre-existing. So technically, you know, and, and he's right, the times I've tried to get people to change it, they, it's, 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 it's like it's like trying to fly, so I gave up on the whole thing, but I have no problem, you know, I mean, I'm checking that. Eric, you want, you want to go through your reasoning there a little bit?
Well, yes, I, I refer to that term twice. I, I'm not making a blanket objection to the term, but there are two, two occurrences where I believe it's, it's fundamentally confusing. The, in paragraph two, the, there's a key sentence that reads, thus, the property is an illegal, pre-existing, non-conforming lot, not afforded the protections of pre-existing, non-conforming lots. But the, the property was created in the eighties. Existing the code.
So that's, it was an existing lot. I mean, it came after the code, you're saying, yes, the lot did.
The property in question was created in the 1980s after the code was opted, so it's, it's incorrect to call it a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. It is non-conforming and it may be illegal, but to call it pre-existing, non-conforming is a misnomer, because it did not pre-exist.
That, that's correct, yeah, Eric, that's absolutely correct. That's correct, Eric. That's absolutely correct.
We would delete pre-existing there.
In essence, I think what he meant to say was it was not a non-conforming lot in essence, really. But, but I agree with what, what you're saying to do the change.
And then later on, around, well, it's page, around page two on my printout, but that may vary. Where in the discussion of criterion A, first paragraph under criterion A, sentence reads, almost all of those pre-existing non-conforming lots predated the establishment of the code. The term pre-existing there is just illogical because the statement is an assertion about which lots predated. So to peg them all as pre-existing is, is not logical. And I think the term has to be deleted there. So it will read, almost all of those non-conforming lots predated the code.
I agree.
Yeah.
That makes it clear.
Yep, good. Good. And so let's get to your bigger point.
Yeah, I raised two broader points and if I, if the board members disagree or if I'm mistaken, please feel free to say so. The first point, the, the decision, the draft goes into quite a bit of detail about the the large number of tiny lots in the village, almost all of which are pre-existing non-conforming. And it itemizes them, it breaks them down, and it, it points out how actually there are some that are even smaller than the applicant's lot. I find all of this discussion irrelevant and not germane to the board's decision or thinking. As I said in the meeting, to introduce these other lots as, as standards of comparison is in effect to nullify the area requirements of the zoning code. And we, ZBA is not permitted to do that. We can't introduce a form of comparison that because if we did that, then every area, every area variance that comes before us would have to be automatically approved because of because of these other tiny lots, if we allow, if we treat them as a legitimate subject of comparison.
And you say that because they were pre-existing? Is that what you're saying, non-conforming?
Yes, because they, exactly, they're pre-existing non-conforming, they have no relevance to the current code. And they can't, to introduce them as a, as, as a legitimate standard of comparison to measure a new project against would be to nullify the area requirements. Because we could never enforce the area requirements. And if every applicant could introduce the many other tiny lots, the pre-existing non-conforming lots and say mine is just like those, and that's a point in my favor. If everyone could do that, we would essentially be nullifying the area requirements.
Let me ask you, Eric, like, for instance, we could say, well, it is noted that these other the reason why I think there's a reference to the, some of these other lots is to show what the community current character is, what it is, just sort of saying, this is what it is. But of course, we do have the new code, and so it is noted that we have these other lots. But also the relevancy of it is not, you know, that great under these circumstances where this new lot came into existence after the code. But go ahead, I don't want to overrun your word.
That is indeed why the applicant introduced those, those other lots. That certainly, that was the applicant's argument. And I'm saying the board cannot accept that. The board has to reject, and I, and I presented this discussion during our discussions.
I recall.
The board is forbidden to accept that, to allow that to be introduced because it it nullifies the, the, the existing area requirements that we have that we're supposed to work with.
So do you think it's, we put it in there like that, this was the applicant's you know, discussion or go ahead, argument?
It plays, the, the, the itemizing all these lots, comparing them, breaking them down, plays too big of a role in this draft. I mean, this, I would think this would be a settled point of law, when, when a community has a large number of a large number of lots that, pre-existing lots that do not conform, and then a new code is introduced that is different and all, and is different from, from the large body of existing lots, then I would think it'd be existing case law about can applicants keep coming forward and pointing to those pre-existing pointing to those pre-existing lots and using that as an argument for an exception to the new code. I would think that would by definition be illegitimate. Because
Go ahead.
Then what is the point of the new code? You know, if everyone can keep pointing back to the pre-existing lots and saying, I don't have to, I don't want to follow the new code because of all these existing lots, you know, applicant after applicant can say that. And so in effect, you have nobody following the new code. They're, they're all following the pre-existing of standard, and that amounts to nullifying the code.
So Eric, let me ask then go ahead, Donald.
John?
No, I was just thinking
I was just gonna
Go ahead.
The discussion came about, Eric had made that point, and then later we had the point I was trying to make was that, yeah, fifty-two percent or I don't know what it was, you know, fifty, fifty-two percent of the, of the forty-eight percent of lots in the village are less than, less in size than what the code requires. And the point I had made in the, one of the last days of the hearing was that the village board, when they, when they approved the code, they knew full well that, that almost half the lots in the village did not meet what the new code was asking for. They knew that full well. And they, and it's obvious, just in the, in their act of doing it, that they decided that going forward, they did not want to call it, they did not want to produce more lots of, of that size. Rightly or wrongly, that's, that has to be their thinking, their thinking. So that, I think that's, that's maybe how that got into the discussion. I just emailed John first. I, I asked him whether he could join this call. I know he's on another call, another Zoom meeting tonight. But I think, I think that it would be, it would be good for him to we, what Eric raises is a very important point, and, and I don't feel as if I'm capable of really I would want John's opinion about how we handle that. But I think, Eric, you would agree with that.
I agree definitely. It's, it is, it does involve a knowledge of, of the law. But let me raise the point, let me rephrase the point from a different angle. This decision is, it should represent, it represents the board's view, the board's conclusion. It does not, it is not meant to summarize the entire discussion, both sides. So given that framework, what is the purpose of analyzing and breaking down all these other pre-existing non-conforming lots? What role does that play in the boards? That, that, all of that comes from the applicant's argument. What, why are we rehearsing it in our decision? It, I don't see that it plays any role in, in, in the grounds for our decision. The, the most we might have is one sentence saying, while it's true that there are other small lots, many other small lots, they are all pre-existing, non-conforming, therefore, end of story, they aren't they aren't precedents.
Yeah, the only thing I was thinking of, the importance is that, again, one of the statutory criteria just talks about the the neighborhood. You know, I mean, and the character of the neighborhood, and so it's just sort of a reference to it a little bit. But there is the understanding that the requirements are what they are. Right?
Is
agreeing with you that, that, you know, the new code is here. But that, that, that other, go ahead, Eric.
I just wonder as a point of law, this sorry, go ahead, Donald. Well, as a
Well, I just want to clear up one issue. The applicant did find, I think they're over on Constitution Avenue. There were ten or some odd lots in the village. He found a number of lots in the village which were create, which were approved for building on after the code was enacted, but after the code was enacted and we could find no, or there were no zoning variances found issued for those. So we're not, we're not sure how they came about, but but it is true, it is true that there are some small amount of lots in the village that were built upon after the code was enacted. I'm just clearing out the statement you made. It's not quite okay, but, but it doesn't change the meaning of what you're trying to say.
So that, what you're saying
We need to get
Go ahead.
Yeah.
No, I mean
I think that I would, I think yeah.
You're referencing the Constitution Drive?
John, I'm not understanding what you're saying.
I'm sorry, you said, were you referencing the Constitution Drive about the small lots being developed post-code?
Yeah, Eric, when Eric was talking, he, he said, you know, they, they, there was no, there was no, he made a statement basically saying that there were no lot, small, smaller than code required lot built upon in the village after the code was enacted, and that's not quite true. There were some, and the applicant had, had found them and gave us a information on those lots, and they, they're predominantly in Constitution Avenue and then also in White Hill around there. And they numbered, I'm sure, I think the total was less than fifteen. But it, I'm just, I'm just trying to, to, to be clear so people understand that we understand what they were saying.
Okay.
So if Anyway, I think that we need to get John involved with this. And Eric, you emailed a good email with, with what your comments are, and I think that we should we should maybe we can have a, another Zoom meeting sometime next week to push this ahead with John instead of waiting
Excuse me, Donald, John is in the process of joining the meeting. Yes.
Oh, yeah.
You should see us.
All right.
See him.
Well, there he is. Oh, I see something. I see him.
Hey, you guys hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
John.
Good, how's it going?
Excellent. Good, we're, 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 Eric, could you, could you, Eric, Eric had some basic issues and comments which we, we need you to, to opine upon.
Okay, John? Can you hear me, John?
Yeah, is this, is anyone else on? Is this like executive session or where are we at?
Yeah, we have, we have, the board plus Sambro is on. And the, the village, Michael Mel's on.
Okay, got it. All right, thanks. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I sent this in an email message just shortly before our meeting tonight, but I'll tell you what my point was. The draft decision goes into quite a bit of detail about the many other small lots in the village. And nearly, and it breaks them down, it analyzes them, and it even indicates that there are several that are smaller than the applicant's lot. And I'm wondering
Three, I think there are three lots smaller than the applicants.
Exactly. So I'm wondering what role, what what the purpose of this section is in the, in the statement of the board's decision.
Right, well, it goes towards the fact that it's outside of the community character, so basically nineties, whatever, five percent of the other lots are, are much larger than this proposed lot.
Well, the way, the passage struck me is that it actually tends to raise the question of whether the applicant, whether the application is that, because it's, becomes a kind of judgment call then. And, I mean, because there's, there's a whole scale of lots of different sizes out there. And it's no longer black and white about why we see it the way we do. And my larger question is, why is this relevant at all? Because all of these, almost all of these lots are pre-existing non-conforming. And to, I'm wondering, are they a legitimate standard of comparison for a, a, a present day application? How can an applicant point to a pre-existing non-conforming as a as a reason to, for an exception from the existing code?
Yeah, so it goes towards the community character or the detriment to the neighborhood. So basically, the argument here is that most of the lots are, actually about half the lots in the village, a little bit less than half the lots in the village are conforming. And of those lots within two hundred and four hundred feet that are non-conforming, I think the average lot size was you know, much larger in the range of fifty, I don't have it in front of me, but fifty-eight hundred square feet. And I think most of the lots were at least as big as forty-six hundred square feet. And yes, there were a couple of, there were three lots that were smaller than the proposed lot. But, you know, I think the distinction there is that they were, I think they're already built or they're, they were pre-existing, they predated the zoning. So that they didn't need variances, and I don't think there's been any lots that have been shown that have obtained the variance. So the distinction, and they do this a lot with, with area variances, is you go and analyze the other lots in the neighborhood and you, and if you could show that what, you know, the proposed lot is so out of character, so unique that it isn't within the community character. So I think this, out of the however many lots there were within four hundred feet, you know, there's only three lots that are in the same ballpark as this lot. So I think it would, it goes to the uniqueness and the fact that it's outside the community character. This would be the exception, not the norm.
And it comes after the code was put into effect. Whereas the other smaller, three smaller lots pre-existed the code in their development.
I believe, yes, yes. I don't think any of those lots were created after the code was enacted.
And Eric, you remember I was mentioning about the community character statutory element that we had looked at, and that was sort of just used, this, this information that John just mentioned was used as a comparative to community
Yeah, and I've done that like before with setbacks. So if I have an applicant, if I represent somebody looking for a setback, like, let's say on a porch, then, you know, I'll, I'll say, all right, go and measure the setbacks to the other houses in the neighborhood and see where their porches end up. And if, you know, your, your porch is only going to be ten feet, when the code requires twenty, well, if every other porch in the neighborhood is also ten feet, when the code requires twenty, and, you know, they all pre-existing, how is that going to impact the community character? But I think in this case, in this example, most of the porches are, you know, maybe they're not twenty feet, but you know, maybe they're, they're sixteen feet, you know, so there's still a big gap between this proposed lot and the other non-conforming lots. Maybe they're not twenty feet, but, you know, maybe they're, they're sixteen feet, you know, so there's still a big gap, uh, between this proposed lot and the other non-conforming lots.
Okay.
And it, and it kind of shows how this is kind of unique. This is the exception and, and it's outside of the, the general norm. I mean, yes, there are three other lots or a handful of other lots, but I think, you know. I think there was a pretty thorough analysis by the board, and that, and that's kind of what you do, is you kind of break it down and you compare it. To show that, you know, this is either it's within the community character, you know, if all the other lots within four hundred feet were about. Thirty, uh, thirty-five hundred square feet. Um, you know, then it would be a different story. I mean, or if this lot was five thousand square feet, I, I think you'd be, you know, this would be a different application.
Uh, so if, uh, um, if there was a community in, in which, um. Many of the houses had ten-foot setbacks and, uh, trustees created a zoning code requiring twenty-foot setbacks. And then every applicant from then on who came before the board pointed to the large number of existing ten-foot. Um, as a reason not to follow the twenty, the new twenty-foot requirement. So every single one of them got a variance.
Well, that would be, that would support one of the reasons. So that's, that's what, that would support one of the five factors. So there's still four other factors you have to cover. So just because your, your proposed porch is consistent with all these other existing porches. You know, maybe that helps you with the first factor, which is community character, but you've still got to overcome the other four factors.
Right. Good.
So it's, it's not like a, I mean, I, I think, in my opinion, community character is usually one of the bigger ones, um, and analyzed. But it all depends, each application's different, though. But, you know, that's certainly, you know, if you can show that you're within the community character, that you certainly have a, a leg up, so to speak. But you still have four other factors you got to address.
Right.
And in the community character, John, can you weigh, can you weigh, uh, like, the cri, uh, the information that you, we've gotten with regards to those lot, different lot sizes? Just say, using this particular, uh, case. Can you also weigh the fact that these may exist and, but they pre-exist, but also you can weigh into the community character idea? What is the current intent of the code to balance it? You know, as, and weighing that community character, uh, element? Can you weigh what the intent in the new code is as well as?
Yeah, that would be one of your factors that you would consider. Um, I, I guess the existing code would, you know, that would go to the self-created hardship. Because the code is the code and you have to abide by the code. Uh, and, and you should know the code. You have a duty to kind of do your, your homework, so to speak. So, um. So that would, I think, the existence of the code and what the village trustees have established. You know, I, I think that would kind of, that argument would kind of go in the self-created hardships. Um, you know, where it would usually go, and that's why it usually goes against the applicant, you know, ninety percent of the time.
And you wouldn't, you, you wouldn't try to, you couldn't weave that into a consideration of what is the community character and the intended community character at this point? You can, you can look at what the community character is, but can you not also use it as a balance, uh, the new code to?
Yeah, I mean, you can, yeah, you can say this is the community character is averaging lot sizes of, you know, between X and Y. Um, and the code even calls for even larger lot sizes. So the, the intent is to have larger lot sizes, not smaller than what the, the, the current community character is. So yes, you could do that, yes.
So it's a balancing a little bit. I mean, it, it's something.
Yeah, within that factor, yes, you're, you're kind of balancing things with, within each factor, you know, and some factors weigh more heavily than others.
So to, I think what this conversation started with, John, is the fact that we're looking into, and Eric, you, 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 you chime in. Uh, whether or not we keep the language of community, uh, this, this comparative, uh, you know, analysis of these other properties. Uh, Eric was questioning whether or not we leave that in or not. And Eric, what do you think at this point?
I, I'm certainly defer to John's, um, uh, I, I argue, I, I appreciate his response and I understand it. So I, I, um, withdraw my concern on that point.
Okay, uh, any, any other thoughts that John's on, uh, Donald?
Uh, I'm, I'm good with the decision as it, um, as it, you know, ended up.
And, and that, and that's what some of, some of Eric's changes, correct?
Um, well.
I don't think, I don't think so.
The.
I didn't, I didn't.
Go ahead, John.
John, John Paul.
I, I only saw John's email and Don's email, so I didn't, is, was there another email?
Yeah, let Eric, let Eric, let Eric tell you what he made changes.
I, I, I sent a message, um, that, that. Um, questioning two occurrences of the word pre-existing, uh, whether they were correct or logical. And, um, the board and I talked about that earlier tonight. So I, I don't know, do you want to look at, John, when you have a chance, look at?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Yeah, I think I, I think I did glance at this when I was in my other meeting. So the, the illegal pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yes.
Right, so, um. I, I mean, yeah, I, I think your question was, it's kind of silly because it's illegally created, so why?
But it, it's not pre-existing. It, it, if the property was created in the eighties, so how could it be called pre-existing?
Well, it's pre-existing today. As of today, this lot exists, it's a separate tax parcel. It has separate taxes. So it's pre-existing in the sense that the lot exists. Now, it's a substandard lot, it's a non-conforming lot, and it was created illegally.
Oh, okay.
But John's term is usually linked to when the code came into effect, the, often this term, you know, in these kind of.
So, yeah, I guess I, I understand what you're saying. So, um, there's different types of pre-existing, non-conformings. Um, and I'm talking about from today, not from when the code was enacted.
Maybe you can put parentheses beside it.
Right, right, because. Well, right, because you could have situations where the code at one time, um, you know, required one acre lots. And then the, it was upzoned to now allow, you know, now require two acre lots. So, you know, these lots may have been created after the code at one acre. But they were still before the zoning amendment that upzoned it to two acres. So just because you have a pre-existing lot, it doesn't necessarily mean that it pre-exists the zoning code. It's just pre-existing in meaning that from the point of the application from today, this lot exists today. So maybe I should clarify that.
Yeah.
Yeah, listen to Eric. Eric changed the terminology a little bit. Just, just say what you did, Eric.
Well, no, I was just, um, the quest, I was just saying, why not omit the term? Because we hardly could be talking about a nonexistent lot.
Uh, well, because I think the lot does exist. It's a separate tax parcel.
Right, um, but there's no question that, no one's going to think we're talking about a nonexistent lot.
Right, I get, I, I understand what you're saying.
Whereas everywhere else, we use the term pre-existing. We use pre-existing strictly everywhere else to mean predating the zoning code. And, and it's very important and critical, uh, not to, not to introduce confusion about this, the status of this lot. There's no, no question that it exists. We don't have to say that, but there could be a question about whether it predates the, the building code. Instead of kind of existing.
Yeah. Yeah, and so we can clarify that it's just pre-existing in the fact that it, you know, we're, they're not asking us to create the lot. What they're really just doing is just asking us to provide the variances so they can build on the lot.
Right, so I think what Eric said, and I think the board agreed, John, is that what we're going to do. Is just leave it at, at, with the terminology, non-conforming lot, rather than referencing. Because for our own mindset, when we hear pre-existing, we're, we're looking at the, you know, at the year the zoning code came into effect.
Yeah, no problem, that's fine.
And.
It's your, it's your document, so that's fine.
No, 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 but, but we wanted to hear what your viewpoint was on it, and we understand what yours is. It, see, we're dealing with a more narrow look at things because of, you know, the way we draft things and the way we look at things and not an expansive legal analysis. So we're looking at things differently than you.
And, no, but I, I understand the, the potential confusion where people just assume when they hear pre-existing, they think existing before the code. But, so, yeah, I think to clarify that makes sense.
And, and, and Donald, one last thing, there, there was a second comment that, uh, Eric had made along those lines where we sort of changed the verbiage just slightly. How, how did we do it? Did you, did you make notation on that?
Um, well, just the two instances. Um. Well, there are two instances on page one. Thus, the property is an illegal, pre-existing, non-conforming lot, not afforded the protections of pre-existing, non-conforming lots. So, he, Eric highlighted those two pre-existing, and then if you go to page.
Donald, 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 back, back on that, um, passage you just read. Only the first occurrence of pre-existing is, um, confusing. The second one, it makes sense. So I would, I would simply delete pre-exist the first, only the first pre-existing. Thus, the property is an illegal, non-conforming lot.
Yeah, Donald, are you making that a change? I agree, I agree with Eric. Are you going to incorporate that?
I. Well, I, I, I'm, John's here, and I think John will kind of incorporate that change. But I think John is saying that he'd like to leave it in, but he wants to explain it better. Am I right, John?
You, we, you could take it out, it's fine. It's not going to change much.
Just, we'll just take that one out.
And Eric, what was your, what was your second one? Just to, Eric, let John know the second one.
The, the second point was under criterion A, which is, uh. Around page two. Um. It reads, um, although fifty-two percent of the existing lots within the village are non-conforming. Forty-eight percent do conform. Almost all of those pre-existing, non-conforming lots predated the establishment of the code. Now there, I, I feel like the word pre-existing is illogical, because the point of the sentence is to single out the lots that predated the code. That is what's at issue in this sentence. So to, um, to peg them as pre-existing at the beginning of the sentence is illogical. Should just read, almost all of those non-conforming lots predated the establishment of the code.
I, I, I agreed with that language. I, I think that. But John, unless there was an, can you say anything differently than the way we're reading it, the way Eric just specified?
Um, no, I, I think, um, the change is fine.
I'll highlight the two changes and I'll send that to John.
Don, Donald, did you put that in? You put that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna highlight the two, the two changes that Eric is talking about, and I'll email that to John.
Okay. All right, so, all this said, is there anything further we're going to do with this tonight? Can we?
I think you could vote on, uh, adopting the written resolution as per the changes.
That's what I'm thinking.
And then, and then I'll, I'll make, if, I don't know if Don, uh, Donald has a word document or somebody can actually make the changes. And then, uh, they would have to recirculate it to all the board members. And basically, the email is, you know, the chairman will sign this unless somebody has any objections.
I agree.
You want to make sure you capture all the comments.
Great.
So I would make a resolution to adopt the written res, the written resolution, um. Uh, with the, uh, discussed changes. And then I'll recirculate it to everyone and, and Donald will kind of wait a few days. And then if nobody objects, then, you know, he can sign it and we can file it with the clerk's office.
And we'll make that motion pursuant to the language you just stated, John, and if anybody wants to second it, I agree.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, so, uh, now. Uh, John, do we do anything with regards, I, I guess, uh, it comes out within how many days, uh, if, uh, the applicant is, uh, in listening right now, which he, I think he has been?
Yeah, so we'll get it signed in five, I think you have five days to file with the clerk's office. So we'll get it, I'll circulate it, Don, you know, Donald will sign it Monday and we'll get it filed by Tuesday.
Okay.
And he'll get, he'll get a copy, we'll mail him a copy or email, a co, a signed copy.
Okay, all right, I think, uh, anything else, guys? I think this is, we're done? I, I, I moved to adjourn the meeting.
I'm good. I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks a lot. Thank you, Donald. Thank you, John. Thank you, Eric.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
You guys.
Bye-bye. Thank you, Mike.